I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, or nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kelly, would you call a roll, please?
Jim Lomack.
Here.
Steve Nelson.
Here.
Jane Shyla.
Here.
Jamie David.
Here.
Michael Duvide.
Here.
Eric Jones.
President.
Kristen Rann.
Here.
Of Forbes President.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed?
Ooh, second.
Moving seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Salute, second.
Moving seconded, roll call.
Shyla.
Yes.
David, yes, Duvide.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Rann.
Yes.
Somer.
Yes.
Our next item is audience to visitors. Is there anyone in the audience this evening who'd like to address the board on any issue? Communications, correspondence, informational items, letters and newsletters. Asia, any more policy questions? We're in between sessions of the override session, so usually things don't happen until the very last minute. So I'm all nervous about them coming back after Christmas, leaving us with all kinds of presents after Christmas.
Unwanted presents.
Unwanted presents. Yeah, the island of lost dogs.
Toys.
FOIA requests. I actually got some FOIA requests. For a while there, we were doing pretty good. There are two requests, both which have been responded to. Good shape there. Committee reports. And then Tony.
We did, we did have a Spartan Center meeting on December 2nd. Very, very good meeting, student-led, lots of information, just give you the highlight. But basically cookies and crayon, it happened, good stuff there. We talked about elite seniors and Spartan stretch and what that might look like, running start through like a Kish visit and now what might eventually become a more developed relationship between school district and Kish Rockin' College. We talked about finals, do we like them, do we not like them? Do we have tests? Do we just do projects? Lots of feedback, I'm sure no one's surprised to find that we not like finals. But more, more than just that very simple.
I mean, I really do.
I'm, I'm oversimplifying, but there was some talk about, you know, are they really necessary, do they help, do they not? So, but again, some good stuff there. If you care to have more detailed notes on what happened, these minutes are great, all right here. Spartan Food Pantry Board met, but I don't want to take anything away from Courtney's presentation, so I'll take it to her.
Off the hook. Committee reports. Superintendent's room.
Well, December seemed to be a really appropriate time of year to, to discuss the food pantry. A lot of families are, are in need. And actually, that grew out of a conversation I had with Courtney about presenting an Oscar, just giving the board an update on how much we're going into Oscar, our hospital care program. So we lumped both of those together and we have Courtney Walls with us tonight to, to talk about both of those topics with the board. So without further ado, I'm going to turn over to Courtney.
Thank you.
Well, we're waiting, I just want to welcome you back and glad that you arrived safely and everything went well in your travels.
My part of being superintendent is, is being here at these meetings, but I appreciate the board's flexibility, got an opportunity to visit our daughter in Spain, which was, she studied there all semester, incredible visit, the sights and the food and the history and culture, but probably most impressive was as an educator and as a parent, seeing our daughter flourish in that kind of experience. She will come back, change the person. So many of you know students who've experienced change programs or going overseas and things like that, it's truly life-changing. So we hope she makes it back safe next Wednesday and we'll see what the culture shock is like of turning back to the United States. So, but I appreciate the board's support. I mean, how long have we been missing me in the last month to be there, so thank you very much.
I feel it just quickly.
But if she'd like to kind of give a presentation to the board of her experience.
Maybe even cook a meal over.
The pie was really good, I was hoping we could figure out.
All I can say is that our daughter went for a semester and had the same experience, really changed her life. It really was a wonderful way for her to immerse herself in the language and the culture. And my favorite picture that she brought, we didn't get a chance to go visit her, but my favorite picture that she brought back was from a little street in Madrid. And it looked, the whole street looked medieval, except for one store in the middle of this, this old, this old lineup of buildings. And there was a big sign, Chicago-style pizza. So we've had a really big influence throughout the world. All right, with that in mind.
Thank you, I know. I already ate, so I'm, at least I'm not starving, wouldn't you say? Thank you guys for having me here. When I asked, I think it's important, I know Oscar's the hidden secret, you know, of the district, but I think it's important that we continually present on it and make sure you guys have an update about Oscar. So, uh, so we are doing really well this school year, you know, it was hard to come out of COVID, I'll be honest. You know, a lot of people's family lives changed. People were working from home, incomes were cut, and so we were nervous, obviously we lost a lot of staff and had to kind of start over again. So we're still coming back from that, you can definitely see there's still, a lot of our families still, you know, trying to work from home, trying to juggle, high school students getting out earlier, so they're able to babysit their siblings. But our numbers are still phenomenal, so when I pulled this the other day, and two more enrolled last night. So we have 394 students enrolled in Oscar between all five elementarys. So a majority, obviously, you know, and you can very much tell where the heavy populations are just generally with our elementarys. So North Grove definitely has our most students at 126 and Southeast at 90. You know, our Thursday mornings, that late start is still heavy, but we found a beautiful partnership with our elementarys, giving our parents some opportunities to help us out, to make sure we can adequately staff those. So, but our numbers are about where they were right before COVID. So they're just at a smaller rate. I was telling Steve the other day, we met, families are just maybe utilizing a little less versus, you know, before I would say a heavy majority were both morning and afternoon. And you can kind of see a swap a little bit, so maybe they're just mornings now or just afternoons. So you can definitely see families are still adjusting to life after COVID, but I told him, I'd give it probably another two, three years and I, I don't doubt that those will still be, will be back into our morning and afternoon routine when it comes to numbers and staffing and attendance, so.
Do you think that that switch is because of anything to do with financial concerns or more just that the parents probably have more work flexibility now and don't?
I think both. I mean, you look at the economy too, I, I know my grocery bill is, is insane with two kids. So I think everyone's just trying to find a good rhythm to their new family life. So I think we just have to be flexible with that, you know, we did raise our rates this school year, but we actually didn't raise as much as others in the community did. So I feel like we were kind of gradually raising our rates to, to make sure that we went along with our families. So I can say that I feel good about it, you know, I know that I've worked with a lot of families to fill out the 4C applications for the assistance. It's a 17-page application, which funny enough, you only have to fill out about five of them if you really know the application. So that's the hard part, right, about getting assistance, but it's, it's getting better. But I, I really do a great job myself and my assistant director, making sure I can see when a bill's creeping up, okay, well, how can we help? Making sure that, you know, your needs are met at home, but also you have adequate daycare. So, but that's a huge county-wide issue at the moment as well. We're a very small, we don't have a lot of daycare facilities for the needs, so there's long, long wait lists for everyone at this point. So that is the great part, we don't have a wait list for our school year, I always just accommodate with more staff and so my numbers can grow, I just grow with it. So we're equipped for it, but others unfortunately are not, so.
Do you ever, you ever hear from a family that voices that they think it's too high or it's too expensive?
No, I think a lot of the times people think we're very reasonable for what we provide. And we really try to do that. I mean, I, with two kids of my own, I get it, and so I think that's the, the easier part. We're really flexible when it comes to varied schedules, so your firefighters, your nurses, your, they don't have that consistency, so we work with a lot of families to, they'll email us on a Sunday night to let us know what their schedules are and then I'll accommodate their billing towards that, so.
Is there other in-town options?
Not at all, I'll tell you. But I, you know, I think as a parent myself, I have to, you know, I think that's why we pride ourselves on being a great childcare facility is we're here for your family. And sometimes that is, it's just a different schedule or, hey, I have a meeting that came up, can they come after school? Absolutely, great, I'll let the school secretary mail in our site directors. So when you're enrolled, you can, you can kind of be with us the whole time, so that is the great part.
And you don't have a cap?
I don't, so because we're in a school facility, I know, I get that a lot. You know, I always say about 150, but that would have to be all 150 there at one time. So, and I've never been in that situation, so, but I guess when I think that, I'll, I'll beg, borrow and plead for an extra space and make it work. Yeah, I own a two principal's, I'm like, oh, can I have this, can I have that? But I think they, I couldn't imagine my life without them, but I, it's a beautiful relationship. I feel bad for others who don't have that. I can easily say, hey, we have a family night, can I have your multipurpose room? We're going to make cookies or I'm running a staff meeting at Southeast right now. Okay, I can, I'll let them in and they'll start my meeting and then, so there is this great relationship with all of us and, and making sure it's all about the kids, right? And so whatever we have to do to accommodate, we can do that. And our summer last year was 152 students and you guys knew, coming out of COVID, we kind of gradually upped that number. I said 150 and I always end up taking more than that, but, so I assume a pending, right, I always say that, I can't say for sure well, but pending everything goes really well, we'll take, we'll go back to our 200 students for this summer. We open April 1st, typically I always say it's not an April fool's joke, I really have to say it's April 3rd this year, because I have a lot of parents who already put it in their calendars to remind themselves. So last year we opened at 9:00 AM and I was full with 150 students by 9:15. And so there is a large need and it's great, we are able to host that and so we will probably be back at South Curry this summer and, and it's a great opportunity for our students and also our community. We couldn't run our summer program without those partnerships.
So there was last summer.
There was, yeah.
Were you expecting to happen again?
I do every year. Yeah, you know, there's just not many, so there's myself, the YMCA, DeKalb Park District, and I know Sycamore sometimes offers some like half-days, but not that full day. So really, once again, there's just not many of us that provide that for school-aged students, so. So it is, there's a huge need and, and I always say 200, right, it always ends up 230 because I'm like, oh, okay, well, then you only come Tuesday, Thursday, so I can probably take a Monday, Wednesday, Friday and like, that's really just one person, but my staff would kill me most days. But yeah, I would tell you 200, we do our best to get as many out the waiting list or to find other arrangements for them. I work with the YMCA very well and making sure, okay, if you don't have my contact, please, here's another, they have some openings as well, so.
Do any of the churches run the need?
Not in full day, really, no. There's a few daycare facilities around that do offer school age, but it's very minimal, probably about 15 spots, so.
Steve, so is there a wait list because of lack of staff, lack of space, or?
I would say probably space, so we really try to, it's hard taking over an elementary building, right? You're trying to clean up, you're trying to let teachers have their space and give them opportunities to work. My poor janitors, bless their souls, like we have to really chop it up into hallways of waxing and getting the school buildings and then we ended up, we closed now a week early to give them that full like groundery space, right? You can clean, you can get ready, make your coffees. So we've talked, you know, toyed around, I think if the need ever got bigger, I'm more than happy to like look outside the box. I know, because they always challenge me like, two buildings? I'm like, oh. So it's nothing that I wouldn't look at, but it's, a lot of our elementarys use that time, so actually South Curry was the only one that was available to me this summer too. So all of the rest were getting a ton of work. So Mark and I always have like a, you know, head-to-head competition of like, no, you can't be here. I did get the parking lot taken away, they said one week, it was four, I did count, but the guys out there, we became best friends. So that is the hard part, the hard part. You know, I want to make sure we're also building our district as a whole, but, so I kind of go with the flow and sometimes we're here, sometimes we're there, sometimes we're kicked out, you make it work and the kids are great and we just have fun with it, so, and thank goodness for my staff every day. So like I said, 4C and DCFS, we do work with both entities and so we're able to provide that financial support for our families, so any foster care students that have DCFS, we're able to take them right away and have voucher for that. It does require a lot of staff training, I will always tell people it's not as easy, they're prepared hard, and so all of my staff have to take a four-hour online class, CPR first aid certified, which we always do anyways, but, and then every two years I have to do a pretty hefty binder, and five of them, they make me rent for each elementary to make sure that we are recertified for DCFS care. Our staff, like I said, they're all CPR, CPR first aid certified, usually within the first three months. And then, right now I had our assistant director, we have about 100 staff as well, so between, maybe they only work summer, they work school year, they're off for the semester, but that's how many open HR files that we've had right now, so, which is crazy, I didn't really think I had 100 at times, but they were all in a room today, I'm like, oh my, oh you, oh you. But it's nice, we have a lot of college kids home as well, so I very much feel like a parent when they're all back, so.
So no trouble getting in?
No, you know, but also I do a lot of legwork, right? So NIU, Kish, the high school I'm able to hire, so I put it on their, their, what is it called, their?
Canvas.
Thank you. Look, I even know who it is, Canvas, and I think I had like 30 inquiries within the first hour. So, you know, so I think they're, I just have figured out a good rhyme to my rhythm of life. Or sometimes I'll offer like, I'll get you a Starbucks if you refer me a staff and they stay for 30 days and they're like, yes! And so, you know, it's small stuff, my staff motivated, and they, they want good workers, right? You want a great staff member, so they're probably my best at finding other staff to work at Oscar. And I just hired my first batch of students that I started with and now they're my staff and so that's a really hard reality for myself. Oh, yeah, okay.
You've grown up.
Yeah, I'm a little, I guess I'm older too, so. So Oscar Jr., so that's our kind of swing on it, and I always, everyone gets confused, right, about, okay, what's early childhood, what's Oscar Jr.? So three years ago, they put on me like, hey, we have this idea, it was probably June, can you make it work? Okay. So we did, we started a preschool daycare, so we saw a large reason that enrollment was struggling in early childhood is what, people couldn't, you know, make that two hours work during the day, so why not provide the full day of care for our families? So we provide care from 7:30 to 5:00 at an extra cost for our families. And so we have currently 32 kids enrolled in three different classrooms. We have six staff, two of them are part-time. And then a beautiful partnership with Little Spartans, Steven I think probably talked more than on a daily basis about enrollment, there was a kid today, I think she'll enroll in January, I'll enroll in January. A lot of root for growth and so this is also 4C approved, which is great, right? Our, our program, around the county, there's just not much for preschools. So I anticipate this growing really fast, it grew faster than I thought in three years now that we have three classrooms and six staff versus one classroom, seven students and two staff. So my own child is in it, so as a parent, I will tell you it's beautiful, this is my child's second year in Oscar Jr. And I will tell you from a parent perspective, I could have never done what they've done for my child, really giving them those skills that she will be more than ready for kindergarten and we'll excel due to Little Spartans and Oscar Jr. She can write her name all of a sudden and spells more than I probably would enjoy at times and so, but what an amazing feeling as a parent, being able to know that she'll step into kindergarten and flourish just because of those simple skills that she learned within a school setting, so. And I have to always say, I, I was silly and kind of corny, Sycamore where life offers more, but it's true, I'm really, really lucky in a community where we're at. Harsh, I always put the first, right? The Sycamore pool, that was a really hard one for myself to, I, I've been threatened for years that we're closing, right? I just continually, but they're not, it's fine. So that was a really hard news right before Thanksgiving, but don't worry, I already got it fixed, so Janowa Pool and I, well, we already have a partnership, so we will start with them this summer going on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. So super excited for our families to still get that pool and Park District feel and Janowa has been very welcoming towards us with that, so I'm excited, I was really nervous I met with them, I'm like, don't worry, I solved the issue already, it's fine, there we go, no worries. And then we'll still utilize a splash pad as well over at the Park District, so they're great in letting us use those facilities. The Public Library, we do their summer reading program every year. Our students read over 40,000 minutes once again this summer and got academic lessons from Jamie Sauber, a fifth grade teacher at West, she's our academic person over the summer. So our students really don't anticipate that summer, so I, we keep them fun, engaged. I, I wish I had her energy for learning every day, she's a beautiful teacher if you haven't seen her, but she shines over at Summer Oscar, so please come, stop by anytime and just watch her, you wouldn't even know it's a lesson, you would think it's just a fun activity. The Sycamore History Museum, we still continue our summer programming with them, I love their new building and what they're able to do and provide for our students. Even gardening and getting dirty and learning about bugs, they, they really enjoy that. Chelsea McGee, we do a lot of painting classes over the summer, so we love that facility our students are able to utilize. And then so many other Sycamore businesses, we go, we went to the movie theater a lot this summer, they showed a lot of old-school films, which was great for our students. So really, I can't do this without Sycamore, I can easily think of, oh, you like this? All right, let's try and make it a field trip, or let me try to get someone in, but that's the, the best part about living here where we're at, so. So I'll, right, change hats, okay.
I'm going to interject for just a second to give Courtney a chance to get a drink. When I came to Sycamore and heard about Oscar, it took me a long time to figure out what Oscar really was. A lot of it is the dedication and passion of Courtney and the assistant that she worked with, but also their staff. It's not just daycare. Parents just don't drop their kids off and leave them there and they're watched until they have to be, there are academic programs that our staff provides, there's a passion and commitment amongst the staff that is second to none. I've shared the Oscar program with many of my colleagues, told them how phenomenal it is that we have this program for staff, for community, it's amazing. One other thing I would point out is that it's amazing what you can do when you've got passion and you're willing to put in the time and the hours and the dedication and you have a little bit of flexibility. You mentioned the press policies and laws, who knows what's coming down the road, a lot of what Courtney is able to do is because she's got flexibility that we, that we don't know what's that. So she takes advantage of that, she has a phenomenal job, kudos to you and to your staff, the elementary principals who work with her to make Oscar happen both during the school year as well as during the summer, it's one of our greatest programs. So while she's getting ready to transition, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, you know, it's funny, I, I never thought it'd be as, as large as it, and I was pulling numbers just to, so when I started, I took over from Thomas Springs, and I always say, please, start, like, I could not do it. We started with 275 kids that, at school year, and then we're now at 390. So it, it, and that's eight years, right? So the need is still there, it's growing every day and like I said, two registrations came in last night and they'll start over, right? So it's a great program and I'm glad, you know, we're, we're able to fulfill such a need even with our homeless youth, you know, I, I work with Neely and we're able to maybe, okay, transportation can get them early, can they be a part of Oscar? Great, absolutely. So we're so, I love that we're a part of a district where we can easily kind of work together to make sure our students' needs are met, so.
But I think that's great, that's also providing job experience for students in the district as well and hopefully fostering them a career in education or?
I was going to say, Eric, I think it's really the original, going back to Thomas's days, the original guru, you're on, we talked about that here, but I don't have these numbers, I'd love to go through all our current staff and figure out who started with Oscar, I mean, it would be a significant number, I think, so.
Oh, yeah.
It's really the original guru.
I know, I was, I, I looked at Erin Duett, perfect example, I hired her and now she made a shirt for the pantry, I'm like, it's like this whole circle moment, or Cole Hasler, like, oh, you're a teacher here, okay! You know, it's such a, what a great feeling, right, that they've grown up and stayed here and found. Yeah, you know, and Michael Buckner, I'll never forget, he's like, teaching is easy and you can get Oscar, and I thought, oh! I was like, okay, thank you!
And I think it goes across all our working group, it's all, it's sad, it's fair educators, a lot, it's amazing.
Yeah, so I love it, I, it's like a family, I mean, this is, for how much time I'm here it is, this is also my family as well as mine at home, so. So the pantry, so I always love to get a history, so, you know, we started, we didn't, I wasn't even a part of this, so Atlee and Chrissy Crawford are the ones, when she was principal at Weston, Atlee was the health aide, it kind of noticed this need. And so, you know, we were fulfilling things as, as we could, you know, an older lady would drop off Lunchables and we would give them out, it was just kind of this easy flowing relationship, but not looking at the true need. And so that's when they pursued a grant from the Northern Illinois Food Bank and they made the Spartan Food Pantry. You know, when we look at our pantry, it was a closet out of West, right? We would push them all in there, all the things, and we'd take them all out, hoping that the wheels wouldn't break that day and, and we'd have to purchase another. You know, and, and with COVID, we kind of adjusted and my chiropractor made a ton of money off of how many bags I would have to tote around and pack and get out to cars and run. You know, but during COVID, we looked at the real need, it was still there and, and we were just outgrowing our space and, and so I kind of challenged at that point of, okay, here's a beautiful warehouse. And Wayne, bless him, you know, loves a good challenge, transformed it in about two weeks with the guys and made it our space now. So a huge thank you to Mark and his staff, I, as I said, I think I was the one that was like, you can't do it, and then I walked in, I was like, you made a wall and a door and all these files are gone and, so it was, I was even surprised, but, but a beautiful surprise, it gave us something that has given so many families this opportunity to truly just shop. If you haven't been there, please call me, I'll come and meet you over there just to walk it. It really is a very, you know, atmosphere of buying your, your stuff, you just throw out your cart and go and no one, no one's here to judge. And so really our numbers are, on average, we're seeing about 40 to 70 families right now. COVID, we started accepting everyone, so our numbers were definitely in the 100, 120. And then as we came back kind of down from COVID and our, our funding, to be honest, we really had to look at what is our true mission with the pantry. So that's, about a month ago, we started IDing families and making sure they had Sycamore students. But we able, we were able to provide our families that were still coming, that didn't have Sycamore students, with a ton of resources. For instance, there's a church in Sycamore that's open the same time we are, so you really could just go right on over and still get your needs met. And we also provide those families with a bag of food as well, so they never leave us empty-handed, you know, like I said, they have the resources then to be able to go to a different, a couple blocks over. Last week, we saw about 44 families and in that, we asked them how many kids, and that was about 110 kids that were affected. I don't think our numbers are very reflective of the need, I will tell you that, it's a lot of legwork to make sure our families know that their resource is here and know that they can utilize it. It's a very unfamiliar space for some, the district was amazing and provided us the ability to text out to the whole district, to sign up for texts and a reminder that the pantry was open, and we saw four new families, which is to me a win, that's four more that I got to serve that didn't go hungry that week. So, and right now, so Thanksgiving, I wrangled some administrators. uh, go hungry that week, so, um, and right now, so Thanksgiving, I wrangled in some administrators and we were able to door-to-door serve us a hundred and twenty-eight Thanksgiving meals. Uh, you know, we understand that there is a need, sometimes it's hard for people to get to us. And so that's something I changed this year, I thought, okay, if they can't get to us, let's go have fun. Um, and so we packed up a lot of people's cars, sent them with their list and, and away they went. So we will do that again on Monday, actually, and we'll serve another hundred and twenty-eight families their Christmas dinner, so. Um, so I always look at, right, why are the hundred twenty-eight families not coming, so, um, on this round, we will also drop off the magnets um, and some other necessities for their families, so that way maybe that gets them, um, in the doors for another occasion, so. Um, but I met with a family last week and it was funny, it was just her and I talking and it was as simple as, do you, do you know this? And like, they have more than food, I'm like, yeah, we have shampoo, conditioner, laundry detergent, I'll be here Wednesday, and so uh, sometimes it's like, that, that personal connection with someone that they know, oh, you're, you're friendly, it's, you're non-judgment, you're, you're as simple as I am and, and, um, that we're here to welcome, so, uh, we're really lucky that we have that space and and then our numbers are always growing and we're seeing new families, so. So where we are now, we're at the district warehouse space, so we bought signage, so where people can know where we're at. Um, I always tell people we're more than every other Wednesday, so that's a statement that's really, I have noticed a lot this school year. Um, I feel like I get called a lot for random things, but it's beautiful, right? So they know I run the pantry, so all of our school nurses, kids come hungry to school, they may miss breakfast, we all know elementaries have school snack. Uh, you know, I'm the parent that's like constantly checking the backpack, does she have, I don't know, does she need a snack? But we all know that can't happen for every household, so we provide every school nurse snacks when they need it. So, we're able to buy a large bulk of snacks for our families, so we can be really cost-effective in providing those, as well as Oscar, we provide them with our leftover snacks. So, we're able to make sure every student, if they come hungry, they need a snack, just, they can head to the school nurse and that's high school, middle school, uh, and every elementary got a delivery, so, and I've made two more deliveries to the high school and middle school, actually, uh, for the need. Uh, clothes, so I will tell you that's probably a more need that we'll see in the next, uh, coming school year, a lot of our families, they're struggling with, um, meeting that need of clothing items, maybe that fit, that's, um, that are dirty or things like that, so we're trying to make sure we work with, um, you know, a lot of local groups to make sure we fulfill a need of what that looks like, uh, for our families, but I will tell you that's a, probably a hotter topic. And, and Neely and I have worked well together about getting kids coats and gloves and things, so, um, I have noticed that that's more of a trend for us. The calls we get, you know, I've gotten calls from the high school, um, a couple times this year and I've done home deliveries for families, uh, you know, whatever their circumstances. Uh, they've said something to someone that they've trusted and so I, I'm more than happy to go be that crazy girl at your doorstep and food. Uh, so I've done that on a couple occasions as well and that's great, I can simply just pick it up on my way home and, and make sure that family gets the needs met that day. The high school also has bins in their guidance counseling offices with shampoo, conditioner, deodorant that, um, they can just simply throw in kids' backpack or they can put it in their pocket and, and the need is met simply, and then they allow us to know if they need a refill. Um, our school district food drive, so every month, uh, our schools work together to post out just one item, so that's a huge, um, kind of making sure that people know that we exist, but also they can easily meet a need, you know? We get the one you need right now and that's, well, everything, right? I, I, it's a hard question to, uh, answer for people, so this is an easy way each month, so for instance, December, it's shampoo, conditioner, so every school has a box, throw it in and then we come pick it up at the end of the month and we stock our shelves. Um, I'll tell you, the first month was deodorant and I can tell you every bit of deodorant's gone again. So that's how quick the need is and, and we even limit deodorant to two per family, so. Um, the community support's beautiful, I, I work great with Barb through the pantry and, and her and I are very amicable. Share stories, we call each other if there's good diapers, uh, to be ordered. Um, and, you know, I always am so lucky to say that Sycamore is very supportive, um, our athletics, our softball girls just came and played Christmas music and packed, uh, a hundred and sixty-six, um, bags of, uh, cake mix, icing and candles, and we call them celebration bags, and so that could be as simple as a birthday, uh, A on a paper, a really good day at school. Uh, the celebration is up to you and what that looks like, but we offer those to our families. Uh, Rotary has done a beautiful job and, and we've written grants with them to provide us with a new freezer. Uh, Kiwanis Workhorses, man, they are phenomenal, they'll keep me on my toes when it comes to pantry nights. Um, so like I said, those services and, and community is, is beautiful and I know if I call someone, they need, will be met, which, uh, most others probably couldn't today. So everyone always asks, what's your need, right, what, what do you need from us, and so I would just say, um, there's three things, right? Financial is always huge, so most people don't understand, about two years ago, it was costing eight hundred dollars for me to purchase probably three pallets of food, right now, that's about twenty-five hundred dollars, so you feel inflation and so do I, coming from a food bank. Um, and so that's the hard part, every week it differs what I can order, I was really jazzed this time, I, that toilet paper was an option, I think I probably blessed the warehouse, uh, that they're about to receive probably more pallets than they need. Um, but that's on average what we're spending, so you think that's five thousand dollars a month that I'm spending just to keep the doors open and make sure the need is met uh, for our community. Time is huge, uh, you know, I always say, if you need money, just call me, a lot of the times, even I give projects to people uh, need what paid it, how many diapers, uh, her kids have asked, if you put in gallon size bags or trash bags, that's a huge thing, we put ten in a gallon size baggie, but that can be beautiful for a family and very cost-effective. Um, so even those small projects are, are huge, so putting in the time. Um, and then word of mouth, it's just saying something to someone and that is probably my biggest ask of anyone I ever meet is just saying something, right? I interacted with someone, they had no idea we existed and it ended up being a great fundraiser, so it's sometimes it's just a, hey, do you know there's a Spartan Food Pantry and a lot of times it's, no, where's it at? Um, so a lot of times it's just your guys', uh, your ability to reach others and so that's probably my biggest sell of the night is to say thank you, but continuing our mission is just word of mouth and that's Oscar and the Food Pantry. It's just continuing to make sure the message is heard by all of the members of our community. Yes.
If a new member that doesn't have any connection to our school or district, really is interested in supporting the Food Pantry, they would donation, financially donation, canned goods, whatever, is there an easy way for them to drop stuff off?
It's me, I, and most of the time I will tell you, it's myself or Addie, so I broke her in, right, so we run Oscar and Food Pantry. Um, yeah, we meet, so like Friday I met somebody in the morning at seven AM and met him at the Food Pantry and so or Thomas is our board president, he'll meet somebody, so quite often it's just that simple, reaching out via email or phone and then I'll always find a time, so, and if it's not myself, it's one of our board members, so.
I was gonna say, we also have the spartanfoodpantry.org website, there's a PayPal link on there for donating financially, there's an Amazon wishlist link on there for items that the pantry's looking for, but I don't want you to escape without mentioning the other community support that we have financially, um, as far as the the push to get some of the staff to, to donate with paychecks, that was a big push.
Yeah, so we did a big push, uh, we were really, um, excited, so the first day that teachers were back, we were able to be part of that first day and so um, we get about four hundred dollars every paycheck from our staff, which is huge, right, and so um, and that even helped so many members of our, you know, teaching staff, our paraeducators, our custodians had no idea. So sometimes it is, it's just a like, oh, you're that girl that was on that video, yeah, that was me. Um, but we tried to make sure that they knew, uh, because sometimes it is, I've had a computer teacher at the high school email me and just say, hey, aren't you that person? Absolutely, and we made a connection and I was able to fulfill a family's needs. So it really is just that word of mouth and that ability to get in front of people, uh, that makes all the difference in the world, but absolutely, reaching out via email, call me, flag me, absolutely, we make sure, we make sure the need is met and we can meet them there, so.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Courtney?
I know I talk a lot, so. Thanks.
Thanks, Courtney. That's the only item on the superintendent's report for this meeting, so.
Uh, open discussion in future agenda items.
I do wanna just throw this out, it's not business related, it kinda came up last minute and looking at Lauren, cause I may need her help here. Um, Stephen Jamrog is now employed as, you know, through Spartan TV, he's done a phenomenal job. Um, one of the things he has recently resurrected was, um, the cable, the
Public App Access Channel.
So, for a while that was dormant, um, but it's back up on its feet and, and another, um, medium for the school district to communicate through, so you may, you may start to see or hear about things, you know, happening on the public people in the community, they see that and say, hey, and you know, it's up and running again, that's really a testament to Stephen, he did ton of legwork, uh, to make this happen, but, um, this is just, I had a conversation with, with Lauren about that today, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
Other, uh, discussion issues, questions? Future agenda items? And I need a motion, a motion to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to the appointment and appointment of dismissal of personnel reports.
Second.
Seconded, roll.
Davy?
Yes.
Lido?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Brand?
Yes.
Shirel?
Yes.
Donda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Some time for executive session. We're back in, uh, open session, is there a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
A move.
Second. And seconded, Rokoff?
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Brand?
Yes.
Shirel?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
Lido?
Yes.
Donda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All vayver?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yay.